I noticed the other day.
Yeah.
Well, from that time there all of a sudden.
It's popping up on everything, you know, I don't like it either. I don't use it. Yeah, every time I include my photos in my phone or something, it pops up.
Meeting will come to order. It's Motcom County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting for Monday, September eighth. Begin with a pledge of allegiance. I'd invite you to remain standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chairman Peterson.
Thank you Pastor Dennis Ross with us today. Leave some prayer, please.
Heavenly Father, once again, we pray for your guidance and wisdom for our county's mission. We thank you for the willingness to serve. Lord, we thank you for all that we have. We thank you for the good financial shape we're in. Pray that you would help us distribute those things and use them the best that we can for people of our county. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alexander.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Johnson.
Here.
Mahar.
Here.
Har.
Yes.
And Murray.
We have a quorum. Everyone have a copy of the agenda for tonight. I don't have anything to change. Does anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alexander.
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Everyone have a copy of the meeting minutes, the last meeting, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alexander.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five meeting as presented.
It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes, the last regular meeting, August twenty five, twenty twenty five, as presented. Discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Public comments.
How y'all doing, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Joe. I live in Greenville, Michigan. How are you? Let me let you know how I work. I move on my own time and I bring things up at my own pace. So let me begin by explaining performative politics to you. Not performative is like going through the motions, actually putting on a performance to get attention. At Cranford, New Jersey Town Hall, local candidate Willie Philly, Ed Willie Phil, took a podium by a way of a silent breakdance, complete with robot moves and all that stuff. Moral of the story, he tried to draw attention to what really mattered to him, and that was a spike in taxes. Now, before you doubt performance, a road I was speaking about recently that was just getting weed whacked today by the city, so I quote, "Don't have to go gator hunting anymore", got me thinking about a message I got today. His name is Colin. Hey Joe, I just wanted to let you know after you posted that video about Dodge Street, I went past and saw the city of Greenville weed whacking all the weeds on the street down. You are really helping make a difference in Greenville. So thank you and keep up the good work. Like, I will actually get dirty for the people of Greenville, not for pay, just for the purpose of making a point. I don't mind confrontation. I'll do whatever it takes to draw attention to whatever I believe needs drawing attention to. It's not always something that is unknown in general, something people may not have paid attention to. Like, for instance, is it true all six of you who appointed the Greenville Commissioner when all your most recent elections uncontested? So people literally had no choice but to write you or vote for you or write it. Then you appointed someone not one Greenville voter has ever made a vote for. So no Greenville voter had any say in this process. Indeed, process. Now, Adam, congrats, Jack. I'm gonna start getting into local politics now because you're on board about time. Scott Painter, I've known him for years. He was the most recent commissioner. You won't find a better choice for this position. Congrats. He was the most recent guy, leads me to believe, was his resignation plan and his appointment shortly thereafter. People who reacted to Adam's comment, Elizabeth Walden, Amanda Long, Elizabeth Walden, news editor for the Daily News, Maltville and Ionia Counties, follow her on Twitter. Now, why do I bring her up? Commissioner Charlie Mahar of Yurica Township asked Johnson if he stays informed about government politics and current events. I subscribe to the Daily News, Johnson answered. I know what Elizabeth wants me to know. At least one of the six candidates interviewed for Monday had sour grapes immediately after Johnson was appointed to new commissioner. It appears that does lead others to what to think. Actually, I had no problem reporting how I was feeling without ever asking for a quote. Anything else? You want to tell me how I'm feeling now? You're an expert. How am I feeling right now? I do want to know. Maybe angry, relieved? I don't know. I'll look for it in your latest bias article. Man. Maybe your coverage is why our commissioners are so misinformed, as they appear to know what you want them to know. By the way, you could support firefighters and not think one from Grand Rapids who never received a vote should represent the people. Please don't show your lack of understanding that apparently in deference of the politicians you cover.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Whew, I'm gonna try to get through this. On August twelfth, twenty twenty five, I received a phone call that no family ever wants to get. Logistically, it happened right across my office, which made me feel as though my family tragedy was on display for the world to see. However, the compassion shown to me by our Sheriff's Department made the worst day of my life as bearable as possible. I was met in my sister's driveway by Lieutenant Mitchell Chapin, who delivered the devastating news that my sister was no longer living. Along with Lieutenant Chapin, Deputy Mike Kuntenko, Deputy Dylan Tanis, and Detective Ken Butts. I cannot even begin to tell you the level of professionalism professionalism that was demonstrated by each of these Sheriff's Department employees. Not only did they make sure everything was investigated thoroughly, but the compassionate care they showed was beyond reproach. Deputy Kuntenko made sure I had a victim's advocate, which initially I did not want, but thankfully he has insisted upon. Betty Wakefield was on the scene in very quick order and was beyond helpful to me. She ran errands and ultimately stayed with me throughout the very long, difficult day, which helped me profusely. Additionally, our deputy ME, Tim Tremaine, was very thorough, as well as compassionate, considerate. He was very helpful, informative, and treated my sister with the utmost respect. From the Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant, detectives, and deputies, the EMS employees who initially reported to the scene, our deputy ME, our victim's advocate, and lastly, to Autumn Pomford from the animal control, I cannot begin to tell you how respectful, compassionate, professional each and every one of them were. I have one hundred percent faith that they did not treat me any differently than they treat anyone else in this county going through a similar situation, which brings me great comfort and fills me with pride to live and work in a county with people who care so much about others. We should all be very proud of the professionals we have working in this county. I know that I am. And I want to publicly thank each and every one of them for the help that day and then the days that followed. I've always said that we are only as good as the people we surround ourselves with, and Sheriff Williams has certainly done a good job surrounding himself with the best.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I believe I was contested.
I've ran contested.
That was pain.
Sorry.
Um, Darla Waffle, cancer wrote about the park. I was wondering when we were able to get this taken care of, like lower numbers in the park, like amount of people for one party, one pavilion, no more closing down the park for private parties. Stop there for the neighbors, stop there for the ninety-some-year-old that was across the street. That's the first time she's ever seen anything like that. I swear. She was so shocked. Um, we just want this closed down. We just want this done, you know, before other people are able to get in that way and cause that issue again. We just don't want the issue again. It's plain and simple. We just want to respect our neighbors and noise control and decency and everything else. I guess that's all I have to say. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, our four-ten agenda item is District Court Judge, Judge Adam Eggleston is here with us to discuss full-time probation officer request.
With a different shirt?
I know. I couldn't find my green one. So this one's just as old, though. I promise. So.
Beth is gonna have a field day with this.
Basically, I wanted to, this is my new probation, newest probation officer. I call her Michaela too, because I already have a Michaela. She's taken over the veterans portion of our.
We actually have the opposite in our. We don't want it too close because it makes it too loud for the. Yeah, for the recorder. So we actually do it the opposite of that. Now it amplifies us, which makes it even worse. But anyways, this is Michaela Sattler. She's taken over that portion of that. She's really been a great addition to our district court, and I've been shocked at what I didn't know. Really, in treating veterans, you almost have to do it completely different because of the VA and the possible benefits and and how it's all utilized. So it's been very interesting. I don't want to go too much into that today, but I've been shocked and pleasantly surprised on how effective it actually has been to this point in finding different treatments and different avenues for our veterans through their different qualifications and how they qualify. I've been very pleasantly impressed with that. I want to talk about making her full-time to be a third full-time probation officer, and our plan at this point would be to have her utilize her in combating the substance abuse issues in the county. And I'm trying to, I love analytics and numbers and stuff of that nature. So I was going through a lot of numbers, and there's been a huge increase in the amount of felonies, cases that start out as felonies that get pled down to misdemeanors. This has been going on for about the last five years. Statistics can back it up. I think I put it into two hundred and sixty-seven percent increase from where we were. That's particularly true in when you're talking about substance abuse. A lot of times, people will be charged with possession of methamphetamine, which is a ten-year felony, and will get pled down to the use of methamphetamine, which is a one-year misdemeanor. So we're supervising more and more people who've got substance abuse issues. With that said, in full transparency, we're not, our numbers overall are actually down a little bit as the number of people we're supervising. I had, the sheriff actually pulled the jail numbers that we've had for the last five years. It's very interesting. Right before COVID, we had about a hundred and fifty people in our jail, and in July, we got our population was down, I think, to seventy-six or seventy-eight. So there's been kind of a, that's, you can see it really drop off from about last fall, which I think is when you guys approved the full-time pre-trial pre-trial services assistance. I think that has been demonstrably a big help in that. It's had some on some unexpected benefits as well. People have been under supervision longer, so by the time it gets to sentencing, we are, we know kind of whether or not, it makes a difference in jail and different types of probation and appointments. So it has very much made a positive impact, I think, for our community. And it's not being softer by any means. We've been, if anything, I think we grow far from it. But we have been utilizing much more effective treatment, using different kinds of treatments. And one thing I've always said, it's probably a bad analogy, but I don't know much about this industry, but the computer hackers, the people who try to prevent that, they have to change the code all the time in order to keep people from getting ahead. And that's kind of like our probation department. We change what we do and how we do it about every six months. So it becomes very difficult to get on top of us. We utilize two different types of drug testing. One's with saliva, one's with urine, which I think has been helpful. I just would like to try to push it forward to the next level. I do think that this would be a worthwhile investment for the community. And actually, do you want to make your, I think you have a statement, don't you, everyone?
Hi, yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Michaela Sattler, and I proudly serve as a district court probation officer. I was born and raised in this community, and after serving in the army, I recently returned here to serve the people of this county. I'm asking your support in converting my position from a part-time to full-time. This request is not just about a title or hours. It's about the role, what this role could unlock for this county. We are in the planning phase of launching the Veterans Treatment Court with a set launch date of March of twenty twenty six. We would like to pursue planning also on the expansion of our drug court, which would include misdemeanor cases. Both of these programs offer more than second chances. They provide structure, support, and dignity to people who are struggling and seeking a way forward. Motcom County is home to over four thousand veterans, many of whom silently carry the weight of PTSD addiction and the challenge of reintegration. And we've seen the toll addiction is taking in our community, with the local drug deaths rising even as statewide numbers fall. These aren't just statistics. These are neighbors, family members, and fellow veterans who feel like they're fighting the battles alone. As both a veteran and a professional trained in trauma and addiction, I bring both clinical understanding and a lived experience to this work. I've seen how the struggles can isolate people and how powerful it can be when someone says, "You are not alone. We're gonna help you through this." Research shows that problem-solving courts reduce recidivism by fifty percent and save thousands of dollars per participant. But to succeed, these programs require consistent, intensive supervision, the kind that only a full-time officer could provide. By investing in this position, we're not only building safer communities, we're preventing incarceration, reducing long-term costs, and restoring hope to individuals and families who need it most. A full-time role would also allow us to pursue additional grant funding, which would direct more resources where they belong, into treatment, recovery, and healing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
This is well done. Thank you. But one of the things in district court, we only have one year. We can put him in jail. We can't send him to prison. So we have to utilize as much as we can in community treatments. We become the community supervision. Where at the felony level, they're actually more or less supervised, more or less. They're supervised by the state. MDOC takes over the supervision aspect of it. So they get central, they get some marching orders, for lack of a better term, from Lansing, which doesn't always, sometimes I don't know if it, well, in any event, it can be different than local community. I think it's important to have local control over these type of situations. And when you start getting into too much in the way of grants, you can lose some of that. And I think that that was one thing I really appreciate when we did the community corrections last year, when you guys approved the full-time pre-trial position. I think that was a great move because it kept it local, so we didn't have to rely on other sources of income. But I do want, I'm also looking for some problem-solving ideas here too, because I understand there's some concern that's been expressed with trial court funding, and I think it will take time before that happens. But I understand that there's been some communication and fear with that. I tried to go to a meeting on Friday. I did go to a meeting on Friday, but really didn't, wasn't very informative on where that stands at this point in time, so I don't have an update to give to you at this point. I just know how this thing usually works, and it usually takes quite some time. And I think this could be a worthwhile endeavor for the county if we could move forward with that. But I mean, we're not overly inundated. I'm not saying, well, I need this, or we're gonna be, it's not, it's not factual. Things are going well, but we do have a really good candidate here who's doing a really good job, and I think as the clerk just said very eloquently, you're as good as the people around you. And we've really been, really had a pretty good run recently. So things are going really well. This is a great opportunity, as I look at it. But I'm looking at other sources of funding as well, opioid funds possibly. But the issue I think we run into, our budgets do before we could even apply for it, if I understand that correctly. Other thought is a marijuana funds or something of that nature too, which I think we used for Joe's position last time. So I wanted to kind of put that out there to get some consideration, see what you guys think as well. So that's kind of where we're at with this, and I'm willing to come back in a couple of weeks too, if you want me to look into anything further too.
Okay. Right off the bat, I guess the first question I've got you referenced a stat on how many of these are pled down from a felony.
Yeah, I got some numbers for you if you want them.
Is that a, is that a problem in itself? Should there be that many pled down?
I don't. No, it's not a problem in itself. It's it depends on the reason for why it's being pled down. It's, there was big reforms that took place in twenty twenty one. I think that was part of it. Community supervision has changed. That's been part of it. It was kind of funny. Our prior administration, I ran the numbers today. It was good. The last three years before this year, they pled down exactly thirty-eight percent. I mean, it was within, within, I mean, very small. One, the first year was thirty-eight point like one percent. The next year was thirty-eight exactly, and the next year was thirty-seven and a half. So this year, it just went up slightly, but I mean, it's just because they were so consistent, their numbers. I think they're forty, almost forty-two percent of cases that are in, that are at district court, which is the bind over stage. Forty-two percent have been, it's forty-one point eight percent, if I remember exact, have pled to misdemeanors rather than bound over. I bound over slightly, maybe more, but I mean, we're almost getting to fifty-fifty. There's been kind of, there's been more misdemeanors charged this year. We're on pace to have more misdemeanors this year than last year. We're not really on pace for more felonies. We're about the same. And we have been trending downward the last few years overall, and felonies in general. It's kind of, it's not just here. It's happening in other places too. For example, I was just talking to, I had mental health court today. And I was talking to my treatment provider, because he's the, I have a probation officer essentially who's not funded here, but through Grashit County for mental health and for sobriety court. And he was explaining, and I, this is kind of happening everywhere. Our numbers are down in sobriety court as well. They're down here, they're down in Grashit County as well, and they're, I mean, so I I think it's just kind of where we're at. They, we do utilize very similar, if not examples, exactly the same probationary strategies. We use the same drug testing. We use the same everything because our probation departments are pretty interlinked because of the, it's hard to go all the way over here kind of by yourself.
I can hear you just fine.
So the, so I'm not trying to annoy you. It's just that they're all together, that there's a spot where Matt's missing. But in any event, the, yeah, I think recovery court's also down. So the numbers themselves are not, the numbers of people that are on probation aren't really the issue. It's just the type of supervision. We're getting a lot of people now who were initially charged with substance abuse crimes. And it used to be in two thousand and eighteen and before that some of that was marijuana. Marijuana was the only one you could be charged with. If you weren't growing it, you could be charged with just a one-year misdemeanor for possessing it. Now, if you possess anything that's illegal, it's automatically at least two years if it's an analog or. Or down. So we're getting a lot more substance-related issues. So that's why I would like to hone in on that particular spot a little bit more. Now, with that said, I mean, the other probation officers also deal, they're just, but they're also dealing with everything else too. So I'd like to be very specific. They're down to exactly ninety per, I did this about three weeks ago, because I jokingly told my magistrate that I'm gonna appoint him as the new AI coordinator for the district court. He forgot to send an email out. So. But, so my numbers are all from August twentieth, but it's still pretty, pretty relevant, pretty recent. But the, the numbers have, like I said, it's showing a slight increase for misdemeanors, basically holding steady with felonies. But as far as what we're supervising, we're seeing a lot more reason. But we had ninety, one person had ninety-two, one person had eighty-eight. Add them together, divide by two, you get ninety. So they're at an average of ninety, but that's not totally accurate either, because some of those people are on specialty courts, meaning they're on mental health court or they're on sobriety court. And if they're on one of those, then we actually have a different probation officer, the one from Grashit County, that's actually supervising them. So they're probably realistically close to like eighty per person, which is down from where it was. I think a couple of years ago, we were about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. So it went down, but it's been more intensive. It's allowed them to get on top of things. Our violations are going down too, which is a good thing. Again, we have to live in this community. The best thing we can do is rehabilitate. I mean, that's why we're here if we don't believe people can change. But the, the best thing we do is see a person get with it, never come back and leave the probation department better than they came in. The second most important thing we do is we put a person away for the maximum amount of jail time, because they won't get it, and they're a danger, they continue to be a danger to our community, and I don't bat an eye. I'm not advocating for, for, I'm definitely not an advocate for being softer on drug crimes. I'm really not. I think that I would say eighty percent of our serious crimes are drug-related. And it's not, I don't think making them, going softer on them helps anybody. I think that you get a person who's using methamphetamine the first time, the next time you get them for possession, you don't want them to get to the point where they're murdering somebody, because you're not doing them any favors either. And I could tell you, that kind of stuff does happen. So this is our most serious problem that we deal with. But we have, we are getting ahead of it. I mean, is it getting better in ways? But it's still something that we could really significantly address specifically. So that's my thought process for funding that position and really honing in on that. Now, there's already a recovery court. Judge Krieger runs it. It's very good. I don't know who, Michaela and I kind of aren't sure which way to go. We have a disagreement, for lack of a better term. I would like to just put her on that and work that way. She's contemplating doing a district court-specific plan. The issue that we run into with circuit courts, recovery court, is they have to be on probation for two and a half years. In district court, you can't put a person on probation unless it's stalking, or I think there's a child abuse one as well. I'm probably forgetting one other one, that you can put a person on probation for five years. But for the most part, you can only put a person on probation for two years. So we wouldn't be able to do the circuit court program. We wouldn't be able to incorporate as-is. We'd have to make some kind of a change. But district court, or they can't supervise misdemeanors because MDOC, the state can't supervise misdemeanors. We can't supervise theirs either. So that's an opportunity, I think. I just think it's a good place for us to spend money, if we're gonna do it. I think that would be a significant return on investment. I'm very happy that it does appear that the pre-trial thing's going well. Like I said, this has been, we're keeping track of people much more intently, and I think it's starting to show. So that's really, really kind of exciting. Like I said, we had a hundred and fifty people on average in jail, and now, in full disclosure, I think I broke a hundred in September. I think we did get a hundred and one on like a Monday after they arrested a bunch of people over the weekend, but we're on Sunday night or something like that, but we're back down again, I believe. So.
Good.
But it is trending in that direction. So. So that was my thought process. We could possibly fund it through some other alternatives afterwards, but I think I just want to have the approval in the next budget year to make her full-time. We can, I still think we should explore opioid and marijuana funds for it. I don't think that that, I don't know exactly how that works budget-wise. The county, I just don't know how that would play. But the other fear is that's temporary stuff, and this is probably something we want, I would like the position to be full-time. I'm very happy that this is as good a candidate as I could have gotten, could have appealed for anyways. Highly, highly intelligent. She was giving me a hard time a couple of weeks ago. She said, "Well, I used to think I wasn't smart enough to go to law school, and now I've met you, so I think I can do it." So she got me on that one. Pretty good. So, but. But yeah, like I said, I'm willing to come back if you guys have other information or other thoughts and looking for the end of this.
Anyone have any other questions for the judge?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Judge, simplify this for me. I think I'm getting lost in the weeds, and I hope I'm not the only one. So Ms. Sattler, you're a VA court person now, and you want to make her a full-time to be able to handle drug court as well? I, I'm trying to.
Do it via, go ahead.
I could take this with Mr. Peterson. So I'm currently a part-time probation officer. So I was, I was hired in through the, the scale grant. So they gave our county the ten thousand dollars to fund, to hire the part-time, to get the Veterans Treatment Court up and going. And then the board did the forty thousand and the cash contribution towards the position. In the beginning, when it was first being built, it was that it would be part-time because it couldn't be funded in full. The issue that we ran into as I started the planning phases of the Veterans Treatment Court was that the scale, the funding that comes from scale was just for my salary, and that was only the ten thousand dollars. So it only covered a certain amount, which leaves zero amount for veterans who go into the program once it's operational to receive any type of treatment, all the things that they would normally receive that those funding is for, that they use for the Veterans Treatment Courts is just all wrapped up in salary. So that's when we explored the option of if it was county-funded, then we could use those benefits. And scale actually prefers that there is a full-time staffer on, and they will give the county more funding having a full-time staffer. However, we also recognize we're in a rural county. We probably won't have as many veterans, even though we have identified quite a few. Actually, I have eleven probationers right now that are all veterans.
Well, that also comes up.
Quite a high number. However, there, also, we looked at it, you know, to be reasonable, would it be reasonable for a full-time probation officer for just a Veterans Treatment Court? No. So when you looked at also the need of these. So when you looked at also the need of these problem-solving courts and then you looked, we don't have a misdemeanor drug court. And the drug courts as misdemeanors when they're first coming in are the most important to catch before they turn into felonies. And I'm also, like I said, double trained, not only as a veteran, but in addiction and trauma. So I had talked to judges that I think that to bring two problem-solving courts to our county would be very beneficial. So that's kind of where we get the full-time, the position, not grant, not using the grant funding for the salary, but county funded. Then we can use those grant funds to, to have the Veterans Treatment Court operational and also bring a misdemeanor drug court in and use those grant funds for that.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine.
To build on what she was talking about, that's another reason why it's got to be kind of more of a community focus rather than statewide. Because we're rural and I, I have, trying to find the numbers. I found it, I'll find it for the next time if I need to. But I think we're something like three times more likely to have meth issues in this, this area than the, say Oakland County or something of that nature. That's going to be very different than the often, because they've got over a million people, are what our policies are coming from. So it, it's something I think is easier for us to supervise ourselves, so to speak.
Well, as, as always, Judge, you're very thorough with your explanations and your, and your request, your agenda request. The only thing I'm not seeing is a dollar amount. How much is this going to cost us?
Got that actually. We think we're, oh, math is hard, Mr. Peterson.
You said you like numbers and statistics and everything. So which, which side are you landing on here?
I don't like it when it comes to that.
Oh.
Go ahead. This is, she, she put the numbers together. I didn't, so this is what she came up with.
I pulled these numbers for, based on the position that was posted for the job posting. My current salary started at twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents and it's at a cap rate of twenty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. So on the base salary, on the low estimate would be approximately forty-nine thousand a year. On the high estimate, that's at my capped out at a full-time rate is fifty-seven thousand a year. I did not add the, the fringe benefits. This is an approximate and I wasn't sure as far as how the county goes. But it's, it's at twenty-nine percent. So with fringe benefits, the low estimate is sixty-three thousand. The high estimate is seventy-four thousand. That's based on full-time, eighty hours every two weeks.
We can also send that to Brenda's office and see if we're right here and get those numbers.
I'm sure, knowing Brenda the way I am, she's, she's fact checking your numbers.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
That's what I'm looking for. If not, we could go back.
What, and what'd you say you're making right now?
Twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Can you throw that into a yearly? I'm, I'm not good at math. I'll fully admit that. What, yearly, how much do you make?
Well, she's going to get a wage increase six months, which will be in November.
Twenty-four, so I only have.
Four sixty-two.
Forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-three.
I got a seven.
Surround people with smarter than you, right? That's, hey, that's fine. So, so realistically, you would fall probably with your wage increase in November, you would fall somewhere in the fifty to fifty-two range, fifty to fifty-one range. And then with benefits, probably upwards of sixty-five.
Yes, I, yes. Oh, no, I was just going to say, I'm not sure about the county if it saves on it. I would not need to utilize the county's benefits, but I'm not sure if that would make a factor as a county employee, if that really makes a difference as far as budgeting goes.
Yeah, well, it does, but unfortunately, if we were to make this a position, we wouldn't be able to say, oh, they're not going to take the benefits because who knows how long it'll be, hopefully you stay a while.
Four positions, like I was saying before, so they can't do it. I, it's because you can't do it as person-specific.
Right.
Yeah. It, that's, yeah, that's same.
I, I guess, I don't, I don't doubt that there is a need and I, I don't doubt the validity of, of this position. It, it sounds like you're very motivated. You're very pinpointed in what you're, what you're driving towards. I, I am just the, I, I'm the first one to say, I'm the one that's, that's trying to curb our spending. It's just been, it seems like it's never-ending. We're always spending, spending, spending. I, I'm hoping there's going to be a meeting when somebody doesn't come in here asking for money. This is a different thing. I know that a lot of people are concerned with roads and public safety. This is obviously public safety. Yeah, so I.
Really good point on that too. That's what I'm talking about the rural too. We're driving on two-lane highways and we're driving fast up in this county because you have to. That's, that's what this people, that's a lot higher than a lot of the other communities where you're seeing accidents. So they're much more treacherous a lot of the time. And that's one of the things we've utilized random drug testing almost instantaneously starting in twenty-twenty-one. And we've been really pushing that. And that's been, I think, one of the things that we are continuing to use. And we're going to utilize that anyway. We're already doing that with other probation.
I, I guess ultimately, I don't know as if I'm prepared to vote on this today. I think I need to digest it and see, see where we're, we're at from there. I'm just speaking for myself personally. I, obviously.
And I'm fine coming back too. I just would like to, so like I said, I'd like to, I think a good place to look at that also would be some of the funds that we're getting through, through that stuff too, to help fund it.
Well, and I know it, it seems like you, you mentioned opioid money and marijuana money. It seems like every time somebody comes in here and we don't have a way to fund something, we say, oh, well, we'll just lean on the marijuana money or we'll lean on the opioid money.
Yeah, but with opioid money, it's supposed to be, we're talking about substance abuse. So it seems like this, I, I would be hard, I'd be hard pressed to see a place where it would be more on the nose than this particular.
Right. No, and I don't disagree with you, but you know, devil's advocate, that money's going to run out someday.
So that, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was saying. That's one of the reasons why we wanted the county, you're saying the same thing I'm trying to say. That's one of the reasons why the county's backing when that goes away.
Right.
That's exactly right. Exactly. Yeah. So we're saying the same thing.
Yep. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Go ahead. So right now, we're paying, we have ten thousand grand that goes towards her salary, right? And she's paid at, you said twenty-three dollars an hour?
Yeah, twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Twenty hours a week?
Twenty, right now is the way it's factored in. It's twenty-four hours a week.
Okay. So somewhere around, maybe short of thirty thousand, maybe probably a little, maybe twenty-six thousand.
It's about, about a little under two thousand. So nine, eight, eighteen fifty a month right now.
So I'm just trying to see what the, I'm trying to figure out what the increase, our, our increase would be.
Yeah.
We've got about seven.
It's always hard because after the six-month, there's a raise. And then after a year, you know, it's always hard to, it's, it's, it's an increase. It just is. It's always, it'd be substantial. I mean, I'm not going to lie.
Probably have seventeen grand in there, maybe a year.
Right now, we started a little bit late, so it's a little bit cheaper. So we didn't do it right.
I've got her budgeted for the twenty-six fiscal year with those increases figured in at thirty-one thousand, three forty-seven, sixty-six.
But you had ten thousand of that, you had a grant for, right? So we've got about, we'll have about twenty-one thousand into her and going forward. It would cost us around sixty-five, is that right?
Yeah.
It's going to cost about forty, forty-five thousand.
We're taking the ten thousand grand out of it.
Yeah, but she, yeah, she would like to take that out too because she still like to utilize that money towards veterans. And I, I get it. So that's what we say on front, put every possibility. And I know you're going to continue to get, when in two thousand and sixteen, everything got cut so bad that everybody's trying to get, trying to get their money back. So I think you're going to see, I think you guys are going to continue to see people want money. Unfortunately, this is kind of the, kind of the way of the world. And so, but I mean, I, I get it. So that's why I wanted to be totally honest about every single aspect of it. So like I said, we, where everything is right now, or, you know, I, I think this is a great thing, but I'm not going to lie to you and say that, you know.
One thing I'd like to say is that, Michaela, you seem like you're very passionate about this subject. And obviously very ill-ow knowledge. And you seem like you're incompetent. And so, I mean, I, given that you're a part-time employee, of course, I have a concern that something better comes along and you're not with us. And I think you're the type of employee that we'd like to retain.
That's exactly right.
I think that's something that this board needs to consider.
She is a very good, oh, yeah. It's been surprising. She, like I said, I've been really shocked that, that the quality and how hard she's been working and really trying to put forth. And she's definitely very community oriented, which is what I want to focus on. And I can tell you that Benny's really appreciated her coming along and using so his, trying to figure out all this stuff. Like today, I mean, she's even, she's able to put a lot of this together, so I don't even have to do it. So I, I don't even understand all the stuff she does, so.
I don't think that's something we're supposed to admit.
I did, I did want to mention also that, you know, if the county, as far as the budget in the full, full-time, if that's something that, you know, seems like it's, it's a little far right now. I can't fit it in the budget. I think the, the stress of the importance was the county employee. So even if it was a part-time, it was county funded, you could still use those ten thousand benefits at least to get going because we're set to launch this Veterans Treatment Court. And I don't want to set, you know, I want people to be prepared and ready when they come into our court. And so even being able to take that ten thousand dollars and using that to put it towards the participants, because I have six right now who would be eligible if we had an operational program that those funds could be used for. I think it'd be very useful to use those funds in that, in that instance. And later on, we could always revisit the, you know, the drug court and things to make it full-time. But I think the biggest stress of importance was using those fund dollars that we have, what we originally to do for the Veterans Treatment Court was, was most important.
And I'm, this really is a rehearsal. I really don't know the answer to this, so I hope I don't. But in general, do you know about how many people you'd anticipate having to supervise just in the veterans part?
Just in the veterans, I anticipate around ten to fifteen participants on the low end. Ionia County, they have a Veterans Treatment Court. They put ten participants through their program last year. Part of those were ours. We actually have one in Saginaw right now as well. So, so there, so I, I do see the identifying them. There is definitely a need. There is quite a few veterans, especially for this county. I, I could not have guessed that number. I thought I might have three or four. But the amount of veterans, I've been able to get veterans benefits. I've been able to, I do a lot of things outside of probation, especially with the benefits, getting them with our veterans BSO office and hooking them up. So a lot of different, you know, I can see that I can work with the veterans in our county even without being in the Veterans Treatment Court as well. The ones that may not be eligible to make it into a specialty court, I can still supervise. I can still show them avenues that they can, you know, to hook with benefits, all those different things that require special, you know, that certain, certain people kind of relate to and understand.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why she's basically taken over because of the VAs and stuff I was talking about. That I, I don't understand what they qualify for necessarily. So she's been able to do that because it's totally different than the normal treatment programs that we use for our other probation officers. And we have certain community partners, for lack of a better, well, that's the term they use, that we usually utilize. And we have had to expand that because we have probationers who live in different places. So there's different things available, different spots. So, but with the VA, it's totally a different situation altogether. And that's where we've utilized her in that aspect. And it's been very, I think it's been very effective so far.
Well, let us take it under advisement.
Go ahead. If I could. I've seen how the vets court works in Cat County and very impressed with it. I actually had a, a close personal friend go through it and turn his life around. So I am a big fan of vets court. Veterans are built a little differently than, I guess, your everyday criminal, for loss of a better words. They fight different demons and that leads them to that substance abuse and then subsequent abuse. And quite honestly, sometimes that substance use is at the hands of our own VA as well. So. That's something that she kind of, that's one of the things I was talking about. She's kind of informed me, someone gave me some insight or insight into, insight into that aspect of dealing with the VA as far as getting medications and stuff of that nature, which is interesting. So just a couple of quick questions. You saw this coming. Did you build that into your budget? We asked for it initially, yeah. You tried to build it into your budget? Okay, fair enough. And then, Michaela, your performance metrics for that new position? How do you guys plan on tracking your successes? If, if we made that a full-time position? Is it recidivism? Is it going to be a way to benefit the prosecutor's office? Because he's not having to prosecute these people again? Like, how do we plan? Because you're the numbers guy, right? You like to. Well, I can already tell you, the state will keep track of that and give us a report. That, that's one of the few times we don't get to do it ourselves, the state. That's what they're going to do. Scale will keep track of that and send us a report. They send it to us for sobriety court and mental health for every year.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to add on. They, they have broke down even, for an example, Ionia Court, they'll take the recidivism numbers and say they had, how many, look, and then three years, how many, how many crimes did they recommit after they successfully participated? They break down all the, the budgeting and how it's impacted not only the jail and the county. And they have a special number system that they take each participant. The, one of the statistics that I read said if you have five successful participants through a Veterans Treatment Court, it pays for the full-time position itself. Now, I don't know the exact formula they had behind calculating that, so I can't say that I can bag that up. But from scale and Michigan courts, that's what their data says as far as their handbooks on, you know, why is this important to the community? Where can it be beneficial and save money?
I personally, I, I, I understand what they're getting. I don't know if I totally, in all honesty, I, I don't know if it would be able to be that simple if, if you have five people that are safe enough. I, I don't think you could ever really ascertain the value of it. The easiest way to do it, you can see how low and push lower our jail numbers are going down. I think that it would pay for itself. I don't think there'd be any way for us to, to demonstratively show it. Scale keeps track of stuff based on, I thought it was a five-year recidivism. They'll look at whether or not you successfully completed the program, in the program. And they'll look if, if it's an OWI, they'll look at if you committed another OWI, for example, or a different type of crime. They keep track of it that way. It'd be very hard for me to come back and show for sure that it's saved that much money to the county. I just, truthfully, I just don't know that that's, I know they always say, oh, you know, it's so much cheaper to not put people in jail. But at some point in time, what's a life worth too? So, I mean, when somebody gets killed because, so I, I just, I don't, I don't like to get too bogged down in that. I just don't know that we could ever really truthfully demonstrate that. Yes, there, there are ways that they're, they're trying to do it, saying it costs so much to house a person in jail for, for that time period. And, and this would be an avenue to, to go around that. But the bigger, the bigger real reason or way you're going to see it isn't the jail population, but the stuff you never see. You're not going to see, hopefully, somebody get strung out on drugs and kill somebody. You're not going to see somebody get behind the wheel when they shouldn't and kill somebody. And stuff like that. I just don't know. There's no way to show that. I mean, other than, so there's, there's brat incident anyway. So we could do the recidivism thing. We'll show that on our specialty courts. But the real value, I, I don't think you can put a value on human life in this community and safety. You know, when we're out on the roads and stuff like that, I just don't think there is a number on that. Yes, we could give you the, the, if, if you're able to successfully treat five or six people, the, the statistics say that. But I, I just, looks, I don't know for sure if that's, I, I just, I just don't know how that's really ascertainable to be sure because it has to do with how many wings at a jail are open, not just beds. And there's just a lot of other, there's a lot of other things. That probably goes against my point, but I'm trying to just be honest with you.
Yeah, no, I think that answered it.
Those are pretty good questions from a firefighter. Big dumb firefighter you.
We uh, we actually, because of vets court, um allow them to do um public service with a part of them.
Going to that back court? Oh, tomorrow. So that's other than I don't, she's gonna, she's actually going to the Grand Rapids Veterans Court tomorrow to.
Just to learn and.
Okay.
Down in Wyoming?
Yes. That's what I heard, so I'm excited.
All right, well, uh, we'll look into it.
That's, I'm excited. If there's anything else, like information wise, you want me to look into, I'd be happy to come back, I don't mind. Never really had too much of a bad experience, so I'm proud of coming up here and talking to you all.
All right, thank you.
Good luck all.
Thank you.
We're running a little behind. Our 440 is Prosecutor Tom Gensler to talk about modifications to the prosecutor's office. Mr. Chairman, good afternoon.
So I just want to give you a brief uh 30,000 foot view where we're at. Um, the last report that Ms. Tater was gracious enough to share with us as of before September of this year. So what we have 26 days to go in the fiscal year budget, we're um still 238,471 dollars below our allocated budget for 2004, 2025. Um, I project that we, our office will return after the revenues are caught up. Somewhere about, we'll return about 180,000 dollars to county taxpayers this year on what was budgeted last year. Um, the proposal before you is to create a suitable office for our Victims' Rights Advocate. There are two conference rooms right now out in our hallway. I think I attached photographs to our proposal. Um, one is, they're both supposed to be used for victim um or witness interviewing. And we use one on a regular basis, usually on prelim day, and the other one is rarely used. In addition to those two conference rooms, we have another designated room for the sequestration of witnesses and for victims that were like a waiting room out in the general, um outside the courtrooms. Uh, the defense has their room and we have our room there as well with kids' toys in it and things like that. So we put a lot of thought into this and you guys are familiar with CGIS and uh the requirements that our environment, just like the court, with 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 an ORI and lean as a secure environment, no one can come back uh beyond our card swipes without being escorted, even the defense attorneys, except for police officers. And right now, it's very inconvenient to parade uh victims or witnesses through our office to the Victims' Rights Coordinator. She usually meets them in the outer conference room. And then if she needs to follow up with victims restitution, needs to HIPAA release, needs to avail herself of forms as she walks back to her office, to her computer, gets the information, fills out the forms, and it's very cumbersome. If we were allowed to move the wall about four and a half feet north, then we could create that other office for her in a secure environment, which would be right next door to the interview room. And we think that would be very advantageous. Um, the, we found out from the Crime Victims' Rights Program Specialist Accountant that we can use victims' rights money for the card swipe mechanism, I don't know what it's called. And right now, um as of um again, September 4th, we've not used about $40,000 this year that'll be returned to the state. Again, this isn't taxpayer money, it's not uh state taxpayer money, it's not county money, it's offender assessments that go into that general fund. So uh we can use that for the card swipe portion. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Getzine as to what's involved with regard to the structural change of moving that door frame from where it is um to have it split those offices four and a half feet north. To follow up on uh his honor's comment, um the, our office continues to um catch up, we've been remanded uh five perpetrators, four cases from the Michigan Supreme Court and a case called People versus Pool, Michigan Supreme Court. Thought it was a good idea to resentenze offenders convicted of life without the possibility of parole, usually for first degree or felony murder. And if they're under 21, they have to be resentenced. So again, we have five of those perpetrators in four cases and we have until December uh to uh either move for the reposition of life without parole or to conduct what is called a Miller hearing. And they're extremely laborious and um time consuming. So that's gonna put a lot of pressure on our staff. Um, and there's a lot of other things going on as well. So uh with regard to specialty courts, I think those are based on the clear eyed recognition that sometimes the traditional adversarial process doesn't lend itself to the best outcomes. And Commissioner Johnson, I thought that was a very insightful question that what comes down to is not process evaluation, but outcome evaluation. And it's sometimes hard to do that evaluation in our small county. But if we look at the model and best practices on which these drug courts and veterans courts and mental health courts are based on a statewide basis, if it does reduce recidivism, I'm all for it. So and I know the annual drunk driving audit will be a part of our annual report of our office. The numbers are headed in the right direction in terms of saving lives on on Moncom County roadways. So, but the issue before you again is just a structural improvement or, I'm sorry, structural change in our office of creating that uh office up front. So we can fully utilize the office space that is there.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the prosecutor?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Vice Chairman Peterson.
Doug, do you have any clue how much this would cost just to move the door? We couldn't use what's still there, we're, we can use what's still there or can't? I guess I, this is just a bunch of pictures and and Mr. Gensler telling us he wants to move a door. Are we physically moving the door or are we adding a new one?
My thought would be to build a new wall, a new frame, and then take the door off, move the door back there so that we haven't decided to go the other way. It's just that we take the window door off right in the back, not the whole.
Okay.
Create a, just a little faster walkway.
Okay.
My estimation, if we do the work, we'll have a new frame.
Okay.
Johnson Controls is gonna be the the big ticket I.
Right, but he said we can use victim, victims' advocate money for that, correct?
How much did you say you were sending back to the state?
Um, right now, it shows that we've, well, as of September 4th, we've only used 55% of the allocation. So as of that date, we're sending 39,645 dollars, so.
What you're looking at, that's not right. I show you, you're just 58,000 so far.
Out of how much?
Out of 80,000, plus we got three more payrolls to roll into that. You'll probably have 10 to 15,000 to send back maybe.
How much do we anticipate that'll cost? Card reader, something below that.
I don't know, it'll be, I don't know what it'll cost, Johnson Controls here to do the work.
A thousand bucks, I bet.
How much, Jim?
A thousand bucks. I mean, can't really do anything for a hundred thousand bucks anymore.
We had a plan uh originally to do some remodel out there. This isn't the same plan, is that right?
I'm, I wasn't aware of that.
No, it was there, it was an ask that you had, where you wanted to remo, you wanted to change some.
Take out a wall.
Doors or walls, this isn't the same plan.
I don't believe so, no.
I guess that's part of my concern. It seems like, I don't know if we've got a solid uh plan looking forward. Um, because this isn't the first time we wanted to relocate, remodel. And so it seems like it's kind of flavor of the month again. Um, let's move this door and and go this direction and maybe next month it's something different. So I guess I'm a little apprehensive to wanna uh start reconstructing the building with just kind of a little bit of a idea in mind.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Gensler, I'd be remiss to not ask about this, being that I I do cover the warrant reports in the correspondence. It sounds like this is gonna cost about $2,000 to move this wall. Um, consequently, reading through the warrant report, you went to a conference in Mackinac Island asking for reimbursement to the tune of about $2,000, correct?
Yes, I did.
My, my derision with this is Betsy Hartley also went.
Yes.
She's a contracted employee.
Yes.
You're asking for reimbursement for her as well.
Absolutely.
To the tune of $1,800.
Right.
Does that seem, does that seem justified to you for us, for taxpayers to pay for that? And then after that, come in here and say, well, yeah, we'll give you another $2,000 and move a door four feet? It, doesn't this seem like a little bit of wasted money?
I wouldn't think so. I don't choose the venue for the annual prosecutor's conference.
You do choose to go.
Right.
And you choose to bring non-employees to, to, with you. So if if Doug was to get Johnson Controls in here and said, hey, I got a, I got a maintenance conference next week, you wanna come with me? The county will pay for it. Is that, it's not apples to apples, but it's close.
The um uh training um component and reimbursement for conferences is Ms. Hartley's contract that the board has approved. The, it's one opportunity for most of the 83 county prosecutors in Michigan, key personnel from the Attorney General's Office that we have weekly interaction with and um others. So in addition to the training component, the network, networking uh component is vital. Uh, Ms. Hartley um met with the Jackson County Prosecutor, I'm sorry, the Eaton County Prosecutor. Uh, they have a shared suspect on a cold case that she's working on. She also renewed contracts that she had in Macomb County that we always pick up the phone from time to time and ask them for information and updated forms and things, because that county has almost a million people. We avail ourselves of that. Uh, we were, I was able to talk to the State Police Director. I won't, um, and I had a long agenda for him, including pushing to move up the Lakeview Post, renew that on their, on their capital improvement list, uh the role of the inspectors at the Department of Corrections. So there's a whole host of people um that um it's very important to maintain those personal relationships. So the, we actually, uh, I knew this was somewhat provocative to stay at the Grand Hotel. And I checked with, um, I sent an email to Brenda and I wanted to go with a bread and breakfast and I found that a sticker shop there at the island. And that was the actual cheapest by far uh venue that we could find um anywhere on the island. The conference rate at the Grand Hotel was much cheaper than any of the other bread and breakfasts or the hotels. So I think it was very worthwhile, um, and I plan to continue to go to those, just as my predecessor has.
So again, I I ask, it seems like every time you're up here, I ask you, when does the spending stop? It just seems like it's always something. And and I read in the paper that, you know, lawsuit or trials are getting uh thrown out for not being prepared. We're, you know, we're not on time. When are we, when is our level of spending going to equal our performance that we'd like to see?
Commissioner Peterson, you shouldn't read everything you believe unless it's the Bible.
Shouldn't believe everything I read.
Cases are being thrown out for any reason. And uh we are um tightening up our pleas, we're starting to begin trials um that have, since the beginning of the year. And we're getting cases bound over for court and we're protecting the rights of victims. And I'll have an annual report for you in February to justify those.
I'm, I'm not trying to downplay the importance or your performance. I'm just, again, I'm just trying to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. And when I see things like almost $2,000 to pay to go to a conference, I I'm talking to Commissioner Johnson. He says that's, that's pretty fair comparative to what he does. I just, I I wanna feel like there is a light at the end of this tunnel to where we can say, yeah, our prosecutor is doing an absolute bang up job. We're, we're confident with the money that we're paying. And and $2,000 to move a door seems a little.
We, and just so you'll know, well, I have a very robust budget for conferences and training going forward. We have an inexperienced staff. We have two attorneys right now. I sent them for basic prosecutor's training and intended to send them and maybe others to the Midwinter Conference. That's at Shanty Creek. Again, we don't pay, you know, we don't choose that venue. Um, and I think those are very worthwhile expenditures.
I, I'll, I'll leave it there, I'll, I'll yield my time, I guess.
Anyone else pro, questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Prosecutor, I was confused reading your um, are we currently not in CGIS compliance over there in your office?
No, we, there was a 2024 audit, uh, and there were some material findings in that audit. And currently uh we're, I think we're almost in full compliance. I think there's just one person in our office that has yet to complete their CGIS train, update their CGIS training. But I think we're in full compliance at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
I guess I'd just like to hear Brenda's opinion on it, if she doesn't mind.
Which part?
What you think about them spending money on this? I don't know, is it needed? From what you've, I mean, you've been around a while, you've seen previous.
What are you trying to say, a while?
Coming from the youngest one here.
A little longer.
Um. I don't know, the door, the door expense is not a lot. It is up to you guys, the building, any renovations or modifications to building is up to you. They will have money in their budget to support it and that's why I plan to take it from um if it gets approved. Uh, the Betsy Hartley thing, yeah, I looked up the contract, the wording is very vague. It uh, it's kind of tucked in there with the wording to learn the carpe l system. And uh you would think that that's what it's referring to when it says any additional training required to fulfill her duties follows right after the, it's in the same sentence actually, is learning the carpe l system. So, but any good attorney could argue their way out of that one, so. We've got the money to support it. I hope they don't spend too thriftily next year. So you've spent, you've been spending on a spending spree here in the last month or two, so.
I don't, I don't doubt or disagree that the prosecutor hasn't been doing a great job at managing the office. My concern still is just every meeting, it seems like we're trying to go a different direction. The last time you were here, you wanted to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you wanted to change the job description of a gal in the office that's, that you wanted to make the office manager along with something else. And this idea of a Victims' Rights person wasn't even on the radar. And that one didn't get resolved and we wanted different. And then this, this week, we're on to the need for this Victims' Rights Advocate to have a, a change to the building so that she can do her job. And it just seems like that's every, every meeting of ours, there's a new, a new direction that we're trying to go out there. We're gonna, we're gonna get the union to buy into changing people's job titles and they didn't want a part of that. So then we shifted gears and went a different, that's what my concern is. It doesn't seem like we have a very comprehensive plan about where we're trying to go or what we're trying to do. It's just kind of what, what can we throw at the wall today and see if that, if that's an idea?
Mr. Chairman, the sole issue today is whether um one of those offices are gonna remain to go underutilized or unused or whether we can fully um put it to use, that office space, in a way that will serve victims.
So Darlene's in an office right now.
Yeah, we cleaned out, uh, she's in a um, the old storage room right now, which is not a very convenient location. Uh, so we did move her from the front into the storage room and we'd like to move her next to the Victims' Witness area. Uh, if you decline the request, the fallback position would be just to get a card swipe for her uh individual office door, which means she would have to leave her office door closed anytime that she's not in the office.
She doesn't close it before she leaves anyways?
So you're gonna move her regardless?
Well, uh, it would be very difficult to move her, in the very least, we'd have to use the, a new card swipe for her office.
Our clerk informs us that there's no more spots left on the card swipe in that building.
I think it's a punch code, I think that's what, Doug, didn't you talk about combination door code? So it's more for just a convenience for her than not.
Well, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Getzine, but I, it just seems to me that you could take the current card swipe mechanism that's there and then extend the wires to it and and put it on the new door frame, four and a half feet up through the ceiling. Maybe it's not that simple, I don't.
Doug, which one's easier?
I think we're talking about two different things. If the door does get moved, that is what's gonna happen. Johnson Controls is gonna come in and they're gonna make that happen. He's talking about if, if they don't approve moving the door, putting a, on Darlene's office door, a punch thing where she would punch code in and go in and out every day. It's two different things.
So which one's easier? Doesn't matter to you? I bet it's a little more than that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I uh, I'm not totally opposed to the construction and the reimbursement for our prosecutor's uh conference. But I am a little uh opposed to the reimbursement of the contract employees. Thing like Adam said, you know, we send a lot of people to conferences. We could hire a cement contractor and send them to a cement contractors conference to make them better cement people, I don't know. But um, the other thing, I just could find it kind of funny that you look at, on page 80 and in 110, at the two reimbursement things, they're exactly the same, um, exactly the same mileage, everything, meals, room, lodging, everything's exactly the same on both of them. Yes, that's kind of funny.
Yeah, we actually co-located, because I did take my wife and one of my children. We asked for a separate bill based on the single rates and we paid out of pocket on the rest. Typically, just about in every county, the prosecutor attends with a chief assistant prosecuting attorney. My sister was leaving, it was inappropriate to bring her, and so Betsy was the. And so Betsy was the substitute for the chief assistant. So it was a one time deal. She had to meet with senior leaders at the prosecuting attorneys coordinating council. They have a cold case team. She's trying to get this Pearson double murder case evaluated for that team. It's one thing to do it over the phone. It's another thing to explain this and meet with these people on a individualized basis. So those contacts are very important. And again, we borrow a lot from the bigger counties, and she's extremely well connected statewide, and she's well respected statewide. And so, again, if we're asking for templates and briefs of specific issues that we haven't encountered, it saves tremendous amount of time for our office for her to reach out to people in the legal and law enforcement community. I haven't been a part of that community for a while, and my rolodex is getting stale. Hers is not, so.
Refresh my memory. How long's the contract for?
It goes through, I think it's, it was a year. You did it for a year. I think it goes through May of I just closed it. May of next year. We started out with a six month one, and then he didn't came.
I think that's just a tremendous benefit to the county to pay someone with 20 years of prosecutorial experience $75 an hour. As of October one, the felony reimbursement rate that Mr. Mabel will be paying $154 an hour. The Michigan Department of Community or Department of Community Health for abuse and neglect jurisdiction pays $150 an hour. So this is almost a token amount that she's working for, and she's extremely knowledgeable, extremely proficient. And it's probably the best prosecutor, even better than I am, that this county has ever seen that I know of, so.
I don't have a problem with the contracting. I think that is a good value. But spend $2,000 to somebody, send somebody to a conference to learn new things and everything else. So you're gonna be here a year. It's not even like somebody we're gonna keep forever. That I have a little a little problem spending $2,000 for that. You know, I mean, like you say, if it was an employee that's going to be with us forever and and, you know, we're training and we're keeping contacts open and stuff, that'd be great. But to take somebody that's going to be down the road six months or a year from now, I just, I don't think that's.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, unless we repeal the Thirteenth Amendment involuntary servitude, you never know. We could put a lot of money into some of my younger assistants and pay a lot for their training. And both in-house training at these conferences, there nothing prevents them from accepting another position in other county tomorrow. So it's always a risk.
All right. The Constitution's been brought up. I'm going to make a motion to move the door frame and card swipe mechanism about four and a half feet to create a secure office space for the victims' rights advocate.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That ends our timed agenda items. Up next is tonight's correspondence. Vice Chairman Peterson, please.
We'll promise you it's going to be faster than most times I've done timed agenda items. First up, page sixteen, the Ionia Motcom Department of Health and Human Services has recommended the reappointment of Sandra Cook for a three year term to expire on October 31, 2028. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns on that? If not, I would move to approve the appointment of Sandra Cook to the Ionia Motcom Department of Health and Human Services Board with a term to expire on 10/31/2028.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Hey, next up, next page, Motcom County Housing Commission has recommended the appointment of Darlene Ringler to replace Mike Scott with a term to expire on February 15, 2026. Pretty short term. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? If not, I would move to approve the appointment of Darlene Ringler to the Motcom County Housing Commission Board with a term to expire on 2/15/2026.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next up, next page, attached is the job description for the confidential aide position submitted with the new budget. Needs to be approved prior to being posted. Eric, do you have anything you want to add to any of this?
I don't think any really. This is something that Amber and I put together, thought about back in the spring. And then when we we gave the job description together, what you have there, obviously you've had a turn of events, but this was something that was planned without Amber's passing. So just kind of standard practice.
Okay. Is everybody doing okay out at EMS? No, that's to be expected. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns on the job description as it is posted? Hearing none, I would move to approve the new EMS confidential aide position job description as presented.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, next up on page twenty one is our fund balance policy. I believe in 2018, this was changed or was it changed or put into place?
Implemented, yeah.
Yeah. And at the time, we were still battling out of the nosedive. At that time, it was suggested a 10 to 15% would be a good spot to hold in our fund balance. Since then, we have gotten a lot better fiscally, and we would like to see that up to 40 to 50%. Brenda, is there anything that you would like to add to that?
No, other than I just think that's a good spot for now to position ourselves. That's five to six months worth of savings, let's say, money in the bank. Where if something detrimental did happen, we'd have time to react. We wouldn't have to do something tomorrow. We could do something thoughtful and intentional. So if you want to make it a little less than that, I'd be okay entertaining that, too.
No, I I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea. My question would be, what does our fund balance look like as of today or last last recorded?
It was 75%, I believe, the last I looked at it.
So would that be around?
This week, I think.
10 million, 11 million?
Yeah. And I think it was just last week when I looked at it. I can run a report real quick here.
No, it's fine. I just needed a ballpark. So we're we still have some fund balance to play with, but we're we're willing it down to the the 40 to 50%.
Is is there places that have a year, full year operating in fund balance?
You mean other counties?
Yeah.
Very few, but there are some.
But it's probably the counties that have like an operating budget of like 400 grand a year. Like in in the UP or something where they pave one road a year.
It was our neighbor to the north. Last time I knew, they had just over 100% fund balance.
Is there an industry standard best accounting practice that kind of guides counties for their fund balance?
Try and ask them at the next audit.
Exactly.
We we try, we try and pin them down, or Commissioner Carr tries to pin them down every year, and he says, well, I can't tell you. So I mean, he's he said that our our fund balance is very healthy and compared to other counties, we're doing really well. You know, I mean, I think ultimately 100% funded is a little a little pretentious. I don't think anybody needs to be there unless there is some unholy meltdown that we have no control over. But, you know, six months worth of worth of rainy day funds to say, oh, you know, state cut all their funding. Thankfully, we have fund balance. You know, who knows what could happen, but. And it's always going to be a moving target because I feel like no matter what our 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 fund balance is going to grow. We've we've tried to go down far enough to where it's just even money, but it just continues to go up, so.
Well, ARPA was a big shot in the arm.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we did a lot of projects with that. That's why we have so much fund balances because that money we would have used to do those capital improvement projects had it not been for ARPA. So we wouldn't be talking about having this conversation today, I'm sure. If it hadn't been for ARPA.
You know, COVID's not going to happen again. Are we going to be able to reach the 50%?
We're already, we're already there. We have around, we have around 10 to 11 million in the bank in fund balance right now. We're what this is implementing is just saying our policy states we have to have X amount of dollars in our coffers at all times.
We don't want to dip below.
We're not going to dip below that as a board. So if if somebody comes to us and wants to move a whole wall, then we can say, sorry, we don't have enough money.
Right. Got you. Thank you.
Yeah, it's more of a minimum thing.
And that's what I was kind of getting at. I I wonder if the 50% would be prudent if we had six months worth of reserve because some of those numbers are pretty big as far as what we rely on from the state with the different funding. And the shape that we're in would allow us to set that benchmark at 50%.
I think when we when we originally started talking about spending down the fund balance we had, our number to shoot for was get down to 11 million. That was a number we were comfortable with. So I think the the 50%, the 8.5 million would be more than more than comfortable. And then and we don't, we can keep the the rest of the fund balance in and don't have to spend it.
Can we be that specific in the 50% or is it easier to manage if it's a range, 40 to 50 like that?
I think it's easier to manage with a range. I think the auditors would tell us that.
So 40 to 50%?
That's what you want.
I would move to change our fund balance policy to read fund balance range of 40 to 50%.
Support.
The only thing I have to say about this is that I don't think it's sustainable. I think that there'll be a time where people, our predecessors, will change this because they just won't be able to do it. I mean, if you look at the, yeah, yes, successors, not predecessors. Can't go back in time.
Not yet.
I suspect that in the amount of time that this has been accounting, we probably have not been in this position. And we probably in the future will may not either. So I'm fine for, you know, doing it now and and trying to see how long we can do it. And maybe I'm wrong, but I just I suspect at some point we'll probably put, you know, we'll probably paint our successors into a corner where they're going to have to change it. That's all.
Yeah, no, and and they and they're going to be able to do it just as easy as we're doing it right now. I mean, this is just a good benchmark for us to say, you know, when it comes budget time, hey, we've only got X amount of dollars. We have to keep 40 to 50% in our coffers according to our policy. You know, we don't want to dip anywhere below that, so we have this much money. I think that's all this is intended to do, so we don't end up on the front page of Beth's newspaper saying, you know, these bozos spent way too much money, and now the state's coming in. I don't know if anybody knows how that feels, but I said, I don't know, something near that.
Were they bozos?
Well, one of them was. One of them was right at the head of the table, just being a big old bozo.
So what about now when we're at 75%? Does that mean we need to spend down a bunch more right now?
I think we need to.
I don't see that.
We keep looking at that every year. I mean, I did put something on your tables from the MAC newsletter about them potentially taking our revenue sharing or a portion of it for roads or whatever they're doing in Lansing. So.
I think that I think the 21 or 24 million that we were sitting at before we started to spend it down was excessive. Great. I I mean, do I think that 11 million or, you know, 10 or 11 million is excessive? Yeah, but at the same time, we just have no idea where where anything's going to land. So, hey, I'm the first one to start spending the county's money. I'm all about it. But I think at some point, we do need to be, you know, looking towards the future and saying, you know, people's wages aren't going down, prices of materials, building improvements aren't going down. I mean, it's just the way it is.
So I'm just saying, so our intent is to get down to the 40 to 50?
I don't think it's, I don't think our intent is to get down there. I think our intent.
Dip below it.
It doesn't read that way.
Is to use this as a benchmark.
But it's, it says, maintain it on a sign, fund balance range of 40 to 50%.
But that's.
It doesn't say minimum. You know what I mean? I just feel like it's kind of reading like you're, you should spend to that if you're doing it right.
Minimal.
Right.
Just the way it reads to me, it seems like that's your bottom.
Well, we're the only ones in charge of how much we spend, so if we know what it means.
I agree. I just.
No, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying. 100%. Um, I could amend my motion to say a minimum of 40 to 50% if whoever supported would.
Just in response to that, I think when when we first had this policy and 10 to 15%, that that was a goal.
Yeah.
To get to that. So that's why it was written that way. So which now we don't need that goal, but.
I would amend my motion to say a minimum of 40 to 50% if Commissioner Johnson would support that.
I will. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, um, next up is the medical examiner's renewal agreement that starts on page 25. They are asking for a 3% increase over the next year's current contract and a 3% for the next four years after that. I know that we've had a little bit of friction with our medical examiner. Is anyone opposed? Does anyone have any comments towards this?
I'll just say that 3% is pretty much the standard.
Right.
Industry standard.
If no one is in disagreement, I would move to approve the medical examiner's agreement as presented and allow for Chairman Carr's signature.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Discussion.
I'm going to vote no. I don't I don't like this group. I would love to see us go out and get some bids. I have some trust issues with them. This started with the way she presented herself as an employee and not the owner of the company. But it goes a little deeper than that with some personal conversations that I've had with her that I she's not been truthful. And so I just, I'm going to vote no. But I'm one guy.
Well, I just asked if anybody had any concerns.
Well, as far as the problem is, is that I haven't really looked at other options. And that's something that I probably should have done because I don't I don't have another solution on the table. And so I don't have anything better to offer at this point. And I know, and I wasn't part of decision making. I know that you guys did, you know, look at other things in the past.
We did. We did shop it around. For the best of my memory, Sparrow, I know, was one of them, and they were ridiculously more expensive than the medical examiners group. I can't remember if there was, yeah, there was only one or two that responded, and and they were wildly more expensive. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to going out and looking again. We can, I can rescind my motion, and we can move to table this if you want to.
It does expire at the end of this month, our current contract.
We would have to take it up at the next meeting. But that's if we want to go out and look for it. I don't know if we're going to be able to turn those numbers around in two weeks is the problem.
Does anybody else have a desire to see other numbers?
We haven't done it in a while.
That's very true.
We haven't done it since I've been.
Right.
Should we just do a year contract? I mean, and then look for other options instead of going for four years?
The only, the only thing I will say to this is we did just approve a budget that has 200 and some odd thousand dollars in it for a scanner, which I'm sure any entity could use, but I know this was kind of a partnership with the medical examiners group. Again, I share your concerns with the whole thing. I was I was led to believe that Lisa was an employee, not the owner. Yeah, it's 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 less than ideal. But it, you know, I I've seen the other numbers. I can't remember them. But I know that Sparrow was crazy, crazy money higher than they they came in at. And I cannot remember the other one, but I know there was only two other. And I, I cannot remember the other one, but I know there was only two other bids. So, if we wanna go out for bid, like I say, I, I have no problem, uh, rescinding my motion, um, and, and directing the controller to, to find other bids. I just don't know if we're gonna be able to do it in two weeks. Do you think we could do that in two weeks, Brenda, or?
I don't know. I doubt it. We don't usually put things out for that short of time.
Okay.
Looking to see when we did that once.
Gosh, it had to have been twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? Well, this is probably, the contract we're in is probably a four-year contract, so.
It's probably, you know, stuff like this is probably stuff we should do once in a while anyways, just looking at some other bids. I mean, it's hard to.
I would, I would bet that the contract probably allows us a ninety-day uh, written, I don't know, exit strategy, I guess, or a ninety-day
I think.
Discontinue? I don't, I don't know how you.
I believe they probably are, they probably cost less. I, I believe that. I just don't know if we're getting the quality.
It's well beyond my, my scope. I have no idea outside of autopsies and every, I, I, my girlfriend watches like crime shows. I, like, that's as far as it goes for me.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I've had some concerns and quite frankly, I should have, uh, approached this before now. And so I, I, I own, uh, you know.
Well, I, I, I think it's just one of those things. If, if this is a, if this is a mantle you wanna take up, I think moving forward, again, I don't think this is a, a four or five-year, just we can't get out of it contract. If you wanna look up numbers and you find Sparrows come in below what we're paying here, I think it's, it's easily feasible to do so.
Just for the sake of due diligence, I think I would like to see if we couldn't at least see if Brenda could, could pull some, even if, if we agree to this today. But I'd still like to see some, some comparables going forward to see if, if they're still, if they're still on the, on the lower end.
So, what you're saying is you, you're okay with approving this motion today and then we, we go and look at comparable numbers going forward, or you wanna wait?
I think she's, I think Brenda's looking to see if there's any sort of decision.
Sixty days, yeah.
So I, I guess I see no problem with approving this today. If, if we find a better option, we could always revisit it.
Yeah. Then I will go forward to my motion then.
Is there any other discussion?
Just, yeah, just to talk about, talk about this. It says it can be, uh, rescinded with a sixty-day.
Good find. Okay.
So what are we doing?
I, I think we're, I think we're gonna approve it today and then, um, we're just going to go from there and figure out if we can get it cheaper. I, I mean, do you want, I guess it's gonna be a separate motion, but we'd have to, we'd have to bring it up under Board Correspondence and you could, you know, ask the motion to send the, or send the controller to put out an RFP for it, whatever you wanna do. Let's get this motion off the table first, though.
You okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine. No, I can do that.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, uh, next up, page thirty-three, the Amendment to the Montcom County ORV Ordinance. Um, there is a red line version included, so you can see what is changing. Brenda, is this, uh, is this nor, is, is this even enforceable? Who, who does this? Is this like the?
Sheriff's Department would.
Is there, are they okay with it, or is this just another?
The ones that brought it to my attention that it was, our, ours was out of date, so.
As long as they're okay with it. Where they can enforce a light ordinance.
And the attorney, I had the attorney do all the work, so we're all good and legal.
I think our ordinance will.
Bye, Beth. Beth, bye.
She, she heard you.
Oh goodness, I'm definitely gonna be on Facebook tonight.
This actually allows people, I believe, to operate on this, on the road. If we don't have it, they're actually operating illegally by state law. So I think that it's in the people's best interest.
Okay. Then I would move to approve the ordinance to amend the Montcom County ORV Ordinance and allow for appropriate signatures.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and up next is everyone's favorite, the Warrant Reports. Um, first up, warrant reporter zero eight two eight two zero two five and the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Second warrant report number zero nine zero four two zero two five and the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and forty-one cents. And finally, warrant reporter zero nine zero eight two zero two five and the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and nine cents for a grand total of two million, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. And I did look, the reason that the first warrant report is so much is because we had to pay the state education tax to the tune of a million some dollars. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns on these warrant reports as presented? If not, I would move to approve and allow for the appropriate signatures.
Support. Been moved and supported to approve all three warrant reports totaling two million, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and items ten through fifteen of the consent agenda, does anybody have anything for those? If not, I would move to approve and allow for the, or no, place on file. That's what I need to do. I'd move to place all the agenda items on file.
Support. It's been moved and supported to.
To do. I'd move to place all the agenda items on file.
Support. It's been moved and supported to place the consent agenda items ten through fifteen on file. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Boy. Uh, and finally, for your informations, item sixteen and seventeen, I would point out the mid-Mich, mid-Michigan District Health Department minutes. There is a very dapper fellow that is the chairman of that board. Very interesting reading, but if no one has anything on that, that will be your Board Correspondence for Monday, September eighth.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Peterson.
Thank you.
Up next is Committee Reports. There's a committee of the whole meeting minutes from August twenty-fifth, Vice Chairman Peterson.
Back to me. Lot of me today. Um, Committee of the Whole Meeting was called to order by Vice Chairman Peterson two P M. Members present, Alexander Johnston, Peterson, Mahar, Carr, and Murray. Um, we conducted interviews of Steve Tanner, Jack Johnson, Greg Vandermark, Pete Frye, Jeff Hines, and Cynthia LaBelle. The Board of Commissioners discussed all candidates and whom they believe would be the best fit for the position. All candidates seem very qualified for the position. Uh, it was moved by Commissioner Mahar to, and supported by Commissioner Peterson to recommend to the full board to appoint Jack Johnson for the Commissioner in District Four. Motion carried. Public comments were offered, none were given. Meeting was adjourned at three eighteen P M. I would move to place these minutes on file.
It's been moved and supported to place Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, on file. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Up next is new business, item one, Clerk Correspondence. Item two, Controller Correspondence.
All right, I've got a few things. Um, Doug wanted me, I thought he was gonna stick, stick around for this, but he left. Wanted me to ask if any of you were interested in doing a parks tour this fall? Anybody interested? He and I did it by ourselves last year.
I saw a lot of McCarthy Park this year so far.
We were there for the whole day.
Yeah, almost.
Didn't recognize you.
Yeah, I know it.
So no.
Did you win that, by the way?
Yeah, I did. I won. I won the whole thing.
All right, so I'll take that as a no and Doug and I'll do that and report back. Um, another thing that Doug and I had planned to do was to go up to Grayling and check out the CT scanner up there to see what kind of real estate we need for one down here on October second. Um, you want me to still go through with that, or?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Okay, all right. Cause Doug has some concerns electrically wise, so we wanted to go see what theirs looks like. And I'm gonna already be up north for that MAC conference, so killing two birds with one stone. Um, laptops. You're getting new laptops hopefully soon. Um, I've got the order in. I'm just not sure when they will be here. So I guess I will, my plan was to have you bring them and leave them with me on the twenty-second. Um, but I'm just not sure that they'll get the laptops in quick enough for us to turn them around and have the new ones back in your hands before the, the thirteenth meeting on October. So I think I'm just gonna, kinda, uh,
Replace them as we get them.
Yeah, so. Yeah, stay tuned. You may, may have to run them in.
Do we get, do we get the option to buy them again?
Oh, I didn't think about that. If you wanted to, you probably could because we're not gonna do anything with them.
I bought my last one, but never paid for it.
It's gonna be outdated and not supported. But the last one in what?
Never paid for it.
Oh, you never paid for it?
I don't think so.
Oh, I think you did.
No, I don't think so. Um, it's been a pretty big point of pride for me.
Ripped the county off.
Yeah.
Well, we're just gonna throw them away.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I can't believe you admitted that in public.
I don't mean.
All right, budget adjustments. I'll have my last round of budget adjustments for the next meeting. I did put that copy of the legislative update from the newsletter on your desks because they are looking at cutting revenue sharing, so we're gonna have to kinda stay tuned on that as well. And then Charlie just reminded me about committee appointments for Jack. How do we wanna, do we wanna just wait till the first of the year and incorporate them then? Do we wanna do them now?
Well, I mean, the veterans probably want somebody on their board, correct?
Well, yeah, I got Charlie, but.
Right, but Charlie.
What are the open ones that Painter had?
Painter didn't have any because everyone had kicked him off.
Did you have Baldwin Lake though, still, or?
I don't know if.
He was on Baldwin Lake, but he wasn't going according to one of the candidates.
I think that's true. As Pete said that.
Yeah.
So, I know we were gonna, Charlie was willing to give up his veterans assignment and Nate was willing to give up his area agency assignment, which meets in Grand Rapids. But I just didn't know when you wanted to make that happen.
Weird.
Anytime.
Charlie's just ready to give it up right now. Isn't that something?
Are you all right with those two, Jack? Do you know what we're even asking of you?
The, uh, for about an hour here in Stanton and then I'm not sure what Nate's is, but.
It's quarterly, right?
No, it's monthly.
Oh, it's monthly.
In Grand Rapids.
At two o'clock before your board meeting.
So it would be on behalf of, like, Commission on Aging, or Commission on Aging Folks.
Where do they meet?
They meet at, like, Eagle Crest, over by, uh, off the Belt Line.
Like a golf place? We get to go golf?
No, it's like a, it's like a apartment or a office building. There's like tons of them.
Hmm.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Those would be, that's a, yeah, they're both monthly.
But it is at like two o'clock and there's a board meeting after, so.
Like, what, what day of the week is that on?
Mondays.
Two o'clock on a Monday?
Board meeting, board meeting.
Before this.
Oh, really?
Once a month. Yeah.
Is it usually pre-timely as far as how?
I leave early every time.
Sounds like Nate's got a fiery passion to keep that. He sounds pretty locked in.
Oh, cause I have the other one at eight A M. that day too.
Oof.
Yeah.
The West Michigan works at eight A M. and then.
In both Grand Rapids, but that one's every other month.
Yeah.
Well, if you wanna come hang out at the fire station.
There we go.
The veterans meeting is the first Thursday of the month.
First Thursday.
At three o'clock right now. They, they've changed it up over so often for one member.
Yeah, it was one o'clock when I started and now it's three o'clock. Well, I definitely have that one. Nate, why don't you hook up offline?
That sounds good. If you wanna do it the first of the year, that's fine too. We could work that out or whatever, so.
Well, let's just, uh, let's send Jack as a proxy until the first of the year and we'll just make it clean and what, did I say something I wasn't supposed to? I saw you hit the delete button.
Well, I was, I was, no.
Well, no.
She was shaking her head in agreement.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I guess I won't.
No, that's perfect.
I won't bring it up anymore.
Are we good on that?
We're good on that? Okay, I guess. That was the last thing I had.
Okay. Item three hundred, new businesses, Chair, Board, Correspondence. Chair doesn't have anything. Anyone else from the board have any correspondence?
I'm just gonna make that motion.
Elaborate?
Uh, just one we talked about here a few minutes ago, as far as having Brenda seek out some bids. I, I mean, even, I suspect we'll probably continue on with who we have, but I think it's good practice just to make sure there's, you know, not somebody else out there that we're not aware of, um, who's doing something.
Well, and actually, our expenditure policy does call for any contracts over thirty thousand dollars to be reviewed every three years. Now, it doesn't stipulate what that review amounts to, so.
So, I'll move to have County Controller, uh, to seek out, uh, competitive bids to handle our medical examiner services, uh, and to have that presented, uh, at an October meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported to ask Controller to seek RFPs for the medical examiner services and, and have the results available in October. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have one correspondence, if I may, not that I haven't talked enough today. Um, I mean, we don't have too much longer to make it two hours. There's only Eric and some really good-looking gal out there, so. Um.
Is that your correspondent?
Yeah, yes, actually. Just want everybody to notice, there's a very good-looking gal out there. Um, so, we brought up last week, or last meeting, um, Brenda's, uh, performance evaluation. Uh, I've been, been mulling it over deciding which way to go. I know um, last year, Commissioner Mahar handled it and it was kind of a, a board survey. Um, and, and years past, I've done the same thing, you know, rank, um, one through five, you know, whatever it is. Uh, I wanted to get the board's temperature on, maybe change in directions a little bit and um, sending surveys out to department heads to see what, uh, what the department heads, um, think about this. Obviously, they work with Brenda every day. Um, they have a little bit better working knowledge. Obviously, Brenda is an employee of the board and this wouldn't be a send out, you know, send out a freewheel and just tell us everything you think. It would just be a essentially the same thing of num, you know, how do you, how do you rate Brenda at this? How do you rate Brenda at that? It's not gonna be, you know, explain every little thing that you don't like about the controller. It's just to get a better feel of how, um, through the ranks that, uh, we feel like, um, Brenda's doing. If, if nobody wants to do that, no problem. I can go back to the old style. But it was just a, a thought of maybe changing it up, doing something a little different and getting a different perspective rather than just us sitting up here and grilling her with questions and saying, you know, here's how it is, but I'm open to suggestions, thoughts.
We did something similar to, to that at Dispatch once, didn't we?
A few times we have, uh.
First year, the first couple of years of that professional.
He did a professional one once or twice and then we just did, he did his own. We did our own version.
And he asked outside employees or whatever on one of those two. I remember the.
Do you know, Eric? Do you remember?
I don't remember outside employees. I know we had the company that did it for at least a couple of years. My basically took the same questions they used and just did it without them. I don't, I don't remember the staple there, so to speak, being involved. Do you have a thought on that, one way or another?
Doing it this way?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a, you know, the clerk said this or the clerk ranked it this. It would be all anonymous. It would be, you know, uh, I'd send out the flyers. Um, they would send them back to me with no, no names, no markings, just, just how, how we think we're doing, but. just how, how we think we're doing, but if, if you're not in favor of that, Brenda, we don't have to do it, or if the board's not in favor of it. I just was thinking, trying to do something a little different than just us sitting up here and.
My thoughts are, I think it's a really important component to an evaluation and I think we should have it as part of it, but I, I still think there's value because.
Well, obviously, we'll, we'll still have, we'll have the same, the same rankings, but it would be, uh, in addition to.
Yeah. So that's more or less, um, starting to become the norm for leadership evaluations. It's called a three hundred and sixty-degree, um, evaluation where she actually evaluates herself based upon, um, the criteria that you would set forth. And then you would also reach out to a department head and even some basic employees. And if you had any, um, outside county people that Brenda had dealt with on a regular basis as well that could offer insight. And again, it's just, it's a tool really more, I think for you, Brenda, like, would you find value in that? To know, like, I'm doing this really well. I don't have to work any harder at doing this because I'm doing great. But I didn't really realize I had a gap here that, you know, someone pointed out. Like, what's most beneficial for you to grow as the board's employee?
I can see value in that, I guess, with identifying gaps. Um, so I wouldn't be a public suitor trying it for a year.
Yeah.
See how it goes.
Yeah, and like I say, it's not gonna be open season on, let's, you know.
Let's bash the controller.
Yeah, we're not trying to do that.
I think the part that Jack pointed out right there maybe makes a lot of sense too, not just county employees that Brenda would deal with, but also other stakeholders in the county, the city managers, the schools, uh, all the other places that she interacts and that where it's with. That'd be interesting to have their take on it. Is that something, who's gonna do all the?
You know.
Perfect.
You know who's gonna do it.
Perfect.
Um, Commissioner Johnson, you have any problem with doing it that way?
No.
Alexandria?
Oh, good.
Okay. I'll, uh, I'll come up with a, a rough list of who to, who to send it to. I, I don't think all department heads and elected officials are going to participate, but some may. If you guys have anyone that you think, oh, you know, um, I'm sure, uh, Commissioner Carr will say Darren Dowd because that's in his district and they obviously, uh, interact quite frequently. Was I close? Yeah. So if anybody has any, any thoughts on that, on who, who we should look at outside of the county, it's, it is a great idea by Commissioner Johnson. He's, it's even better coming out of a suit. Like, it just feels so powerful. But that's all I have, I guess. I'll get, I'll get cracking on that and bring, uh, bring it to the next meeting if you guys are okay with that.
Good. What do you mean, that's all you got? Are you gonna introduce her?
I was gonna wait for public comments. Come on, man. Oh, okay. Is it public comments?
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'll introduce her after, afterward, but I do have a public comment. I'd like to congratulate, uh, Commissioner Alexander for giving away half his stuff. I mean, getting married.
I mean, getting married.
He got married Saturday, right?
Saturday, yeah. Thank you.
He said he's way happier now.
Yeah.
Than he was before.
Things are way different now.
So different.
Oh, yeah.
You're so fun. I did it twice.
All right, that moves us to old business. We don't have anything, public comments.
I just made my public comment.
Okay, it's still never introduced.
I'm bringing her up here afterwards, but there is a very good-looking woman in the audience right now. That is my public comment. And it's not Eric. I mean, you're good-looking, but in a different way. I mean, in a different way, though. I would move to adjourn.
Support. It's been moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.